Can I get everyone to stand for the pledge? Glad I was quick. Thank you. Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, and just for the rest of us all. Thank you. All right. Just to let everyone know and remind everyone, I guess, the meeting is being videotaped. Please turn off your cell phones or at least silence them. Uh, please remember to keep all comments to audience participation. Uh, when speaking during audience participation, please stand at the podium and state your name and town residency. There'll be a limit of five minutes per person, and I would definitely ask to keep all the comments to the board, not to each other. Um, I'd like to get a motion to open the public hearing on proposed local law number three of two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call in favor?
Aye.
This local law requires utility companies to remove inactive, broken, or replaced utility poles within the village. Okay, dear point. Hold on. Could you please read the public, uh, hearing notice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Public's noted, public notice is hereby given that there has been presented to the village board of the village of Otisville, Orange County, New York, on the first day of December two thousand twenty-three, a proposed local law number three of two thousand twenty-three entitled a local law requiring utility companies to remove inactive, broken, or replaced utility poles within the village. The full text is on file for public review at the office of the village clerk, sixty-six Highland Avenue, Otisville, New York, one oh nine six three, or online at www.villageofotisville.com. The village board of the village of Otisville will hold a public hearing on the appercent proposal of the law at the village hall, sixty-six Highland Avenue, Otisville, New York, one oh nine six three, at seven P M. on the twenty-first day of December two thousand twenty-three, at which time all interested persons shall be heard. Written comments may be directed to the village clerk by mail or email at villageclerk@villageofotisville.com prior to five o'clock P M. on the day of the public hearing. By order of the village board, Christine M. DiPaolo, village clerk dated December eleven, two thousand and twenty-three, this was published in the Times Herald Record on the fourteenth of December.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Uh, one thing that I didn't add, um, trustee Logan is excused tonight, and also trustee Latimer is also excused tonight. Any important comments on this?
Um. I think a well, this law well overdue having done to remove these, you know, poles that, not just the phone service, but the electric company had left up here. I think we're well overdue for this law.
Bob.
I concur with Lance.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anyone from the public have any comment on this local law? If you do, please come up to the podium. State your name.
Eric, that's where it's at, the Highland Avenue. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good law because I do, I have seen a lot of half poles, broken poles that should be removed.
Thank you. Um, don't hold me to this number, but driving around, I think I've seen a total of four in the village. Again, don't hold me to that. Um, I think one thing that I'm gonna do is just get the locations and poll numbers that are next to it, because a lot of times when, uh, Arch Rockland comes in and replaces utility pole, they take the numbers from the old one, put on the new one, uh, and I think that's what's gonna identify what this pole is. But I realize this is, um, uh, more for the phone companies than for the stuff over there. So, okay. All right, um. Would you like to add anything? Good timing. Would you like to add anything as far as on this, uh, local law for the broken, um, or replaced utility poles?
We're still in the public hearing?
Yes, we're under, uh, public comment.
I'm, nothing I wasn't adding. I don't think the center's group just sent it down the pipeline. It's been adopted everywhere else I know of, so.
How do we enforce it?
Okay, so my understanding, and I think this is something that, oh man, like a good lawyer, I should punt on this one, but I, uh, I think the only issue I think is when you're on county roads and state roads is where, I don't know the answer, but, um, and I, I think it's, it's our, we can take whatever down we wanna take down, but then you get into certain liability issues, so.
This is only for village roads. Got it.
Yeah, that's, so, but I'll, I'll confirm that. I wanna link you up with the county D P W. to make sure for the, because we have, there's two state road, right? We have two eleven comes through, and then there's a state road also, right?
Two elevens is a state road.
Two elevens is a state road.
Highland Avenue. Yeah, and Highland Avenue and St. Louis are the county roads.
Okay.
So we'll look, I don't think they're.
Look at your answer.
The only question I had in the thought of Brian, we have down on Kelly Hill railroad poles, old communication poles, that don't have to fall underneath this.
Might have another local law. I don't know if that's technically, I mean, technically utility. If you follow monopoly, that's a utility.
I think the distance from the roadway is gonna come into question for this.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, right. Who's, who's in possession of that?
Because some of those railroad telephone poles are pretty far back.
Someone right there on that.
I mean, the railroads leave them until they fall over, literally. There's one hill now that literally fell over because it just rotted, and they're not used anymore.
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll, I'll ask, uh, I'll find out. I can answer.
Fair enough. All right. Um, can I get a motion to close the, uh, public hearing?
I made the motion to close the call.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to open our regular meeting at seven oh seven?
I made the motion to open our regular meeting seven oh seven on the D second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's talking number two.
That's okay. Um, Rory, I talked to you a little bit about this before. Uh, we're gonna just vote on that public hearing right now, now that we're in our regular meeting.
Yeah, makes sense. It's, it's fresh.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to get a motion, um, on the proposed, uh, law number three. Uh, this is a local law requiring utility companies to remove inactive, broken, or replaced utility poles within the village. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, local law number three of two thousand twenty-three, according to utility company move their abandoned or dysfunctional poles from village roads.
Second.
Second.
Yes. Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on down. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular, uh, scheduled meeting from December seventh?
Will the minutes be approved as written?
Thanks, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Lance. All in favor?
Aye.
You do a lot of stuff.
Correspondents.
Oh, I was, I showed up and I'm just slowing the beat down. Sorry.
All right, no, we're good. We're good. We're right on.
Um, okay. Bank of New York melon collateral statements for the weeks of December fourth and December eleventh and the month of November twenty-third have been received. The board members received a draft copy of the meeting minutes for the December seventh board meeting. Village board members received a copy of the two thousand twenty-four Mount Hope required protection contact, and it was also forwarded to attorney Brady for his review. On the eighteenth of December, the village received a letter from Robert Bennett resigning from the planning board, um, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to the village of Otisville mayor and trustees, accept my resignation from village of Otisville Planning Board. Planning board materials have been returned to the village of Otisville clerk. Thank you, Robert Bennett.
Effective immediately?
He didn't say effective immediately, but I believe he returned the stuff.
It's effective immediately.
So I don't think he's planning going to any more meetings.
Okay.
On November two thousand twenty-three, New York State Department of Health Water Systems operation, oh, the November two thousand twenty-three, New York State Department of Health Water Systems Operation Report Four, um, has been received from Frank Valentino, Mayor. G R S payments were received from Locust and Time Warner. On November thirteenth, the village clerk published a notice of the village election, um, notifying the public that there will be an election in March for two five-year trustee positions. The affidavit has been received from the Times Herald Record. On December fourteenth, the village clerk published notice of public hearing for local law three of two thousand twenty-three, and the affidavit has been received from the Times Herald Record.
Do you know what that end cost?
Which one?
Offhand? Um, the one for the, uh, public hearing in the Times Herald Record?
Uh, twenty-seven dollars for the election notice, and the public hearing one, I think, was like forty-seven dollars on the state. They just had it in the home. There's a larger.
Do you, do you have any other semi, like, not, not daily or like weekly, periodicals around here? The motion's got the Chronicle and, and, and the, uh.
No, I mean, we, we, we have, we have two fairly new newspapers, um, but, but they're not, um, I wanna talk about that. No one gets the Times Herald Record anymore. Fair statement to say. Does any board members?
I do.
Yeah.
You still do?
Well, actually, actually, I get the janitors on the day after.
It was forty-five, forty-five dollars.
I get it. I, I.
That's technically a yes.
I took the Times Herald Record.
We don't have to spend a lot of time. Maybe we can look for something different.
Yeah, there's a trend away from it certainly, because you don't have, you're not required to be on a daily. I mean, it's just gotta be, you know, like, you can do a weekly if there's something. So I don't know if Strauss News has a coverage area out here that, you know, the Chronicle or Advertiser, those are ones that people have used, not so, I got no.
Yeah, no, 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 we, we, we don't.
But it's, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, so the question is how do people get their information? I mean, uh, Eric, but that's, that's, I guess, a conversation.
I could take a look and see if there's anything, you know, like, a little more, I don't want to say modernized. I, it's still supposed to be in a, a written form, but it's trending away from that. People getting more electronic, so I'll see if I can find anything else.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna talk about something that's gonna be on my list to talk about tonight that's electronic, notifying people, so maybe we can hit it later or.
Sure.
Okay, all right, um, moving on down. D P W. Frank, John, what you guys got?
Okay, I got the water report for November, uh, two thousand twenty-three. The village daily usage was forty thousand two hundred, and the state prison's daily usage was a hundred fourteen thousand four thirty-seven. I filled out the annual certification of the local highway mileage form and mailed it to New York State Department of Transportation. And general control system came yesterday and installed a refurbished radio at the water plant to, to communicate with the booster pump station for monitoring it at this time.
Um, I've been having the guys that have been working on the slay ride in Hill cleaning that up, doing a real nice job, um, cleaning up the shop, which is well needed, uh, working on trunks, fixing lights, um, needed some cold patching, uh, cleaning ditches as needed. And I also met with Dashoff and Keatedag over the locks in this building and our well house, the booster pump station. A new guy's been here two weeks. He's working out very well.
Yes.
He's a great worker. Um, he'll be a very big asset to the village.
Good, good to hear. Thank you, guys. Uh, let's see, um, town metal, Jim, what you got?
Uh, well, we had our Christmas tree lighting last Saturday. Good turnout. Um, last meeting, we had discussed that we approved our two thousand twenty-four contract with the Port Jervis Community Society. We also approved the Hidden Valley sewer plant service agreement with water system supply, and, um, that was pretty much it. It was quite a meeting. Uh, just wanna say from our board to your board, happy holidays, and if I am not your liaison next year, because I don't know what's gonna happen with the, you know, the committees. Been a pleasure the last six years, so.
Thank you.
We're gonna put a request in for you.
Okay.
Right back in.
All right, um, Rory, you want me to fit you in here? Do you wanna talk about something?
Oh, um, yeah.
All right.
Um, I just, the, I, I, I met with the planning board, um, last week. Uh, is that what you want me to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay. At the, uh, direction of the mayor, um, and it was a nice meeting, and then all the members, and it was, I thought it was a nice meeting, apparently one of them resigned after it, so I don't know if that was, uh.
It wasn't. Yeah, just a little history on the person that resigned. He was a former board member up here, town board member.
Yeah.
And, uh, he resigned from something else recently, and this was just the second thing he resigned.
Yeah, he, he was actually a wealth of knowledge, and I felt like he was, and now knowing this, he was departing that wisdom upon him. It was actually, uh, met for about an hour, kinda got, uh, everybody up to speed, so I feel like, uh, planning board's positioned to move forward well in two thousand twenty-four, so we'll be on track.
Also be here, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee reports. Um, I do have report from Diane, and I also have a report from Brian, but, um, we're gonna start with you, Bob.
All right, um, I don't have a whole lot. Unfortunately, I wanted to make Rory's first flipping board meeting, but I was, I was ill that night, so I didn't make it. I'm gonna shoot for next month. The only other thing I really have is, um, the end of the month, the, uh, the photos board is gonna be meeting with the building inspector to go over some of the last details that, uh, they require before they get a temporary C L, so hopefully.
That happened last night.
That'll be coming. No, I think it's the thirtieth.
Oh, we only were here last. To talk to the building inspector, only because.
Yeah, yeah, but he, they're, he's coming into the, to the school on the thirtieth.
Awesome.
At ten thirty A M.
Okay.
Or maybe ten A M. I'm not sure. Ten or ten thirty.
Okay. Stay tuned for next meeting. We'll find out.
The only other thing, the, uh, photos board would like to thank, uh, our favorite former sheriff, town about native Carl the Voice, for a very generous contribution that he gave. He had the dispense of his, uh, election campaign money, and you have to legally dispense of it in a certain way, and we were the fortunate beneficiaries of his largesse. I wanted to thank him very much. And that's, I think that's all I have today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna do Brian's, then I'm gonna bounce over to you. Talked to Brian Latimer. Uh, I know the questions come up, and I just wanna say this about him, um, for those that kind of have asked this. Um, Brian Latimer is a lineman for Orange and Rockland. Um, I know I get emails, and Frank, I don't know if you get emails, or you got, D P W. does, but I'm sure with, um, some of the power and some of the stuff that's been affected, I know Orange and Rockland love sticking emails out a couple times a week.
Yes.
This particular week, um, I know because of the storm that hit us and other places like Newburgh and stuff, twenty thousand customers were out of electricity in Orange and Rockland counties. Uh, I only bring that up because I've been asked by numerous people, why hasn't trustee Latimer been in some of the meetings, and, uh, I don't think some of the people know that he is, works for Orange and Rockland, and sometimes he gets called, and most of the time gets called and gets stuck at work. Um, obviously, that's his priority. That's what feeds his family, and I just kinda wanna bring that up. But, um, I do wanna add two things. Uh, one, I got with him and discussed the B field project that took place. If you guys saw in the bill for Catching Fence, it was in the bills. Um, I am gonna talk about that under my own, um, mayor report, so I'm gonna save that. But the second thing that I talked to him about was the bathroom up at the firehouse that has been long awaited to get done. Uh, this is the women's room. Um, I actually talked to Steve, uh, the person that's doing it today, too, just to get a, uh, more up-to-date update, and, um, I believe by next meeting, we will be reporting that it's done. Uh, I will be getting pictures very shortly, and we'll be posting online what it looks like. Uh, I think the only thing that is left to put in are the stalls, um, and a couple plumbing fixer-uppers, I guess you could say, or, or, or just finishing touches, I guess I would use. So I thank trustee Latimer for getting me that information. Uh, I'm sure the next meeting, um, he's gonna have some information about Little League, because I know that's in the beginning stages, too. So that being said, let's move on over to you, Lance.
Okay, let's see. What did that? No, nothing. Not joking. Um, my century of Christmas Santa with Mrs. Claus went very well. Actually, we had more kids this year than we had last year. Only thing we're gonna work on more for next year, the mayor being liaison for the school, is I think more local kids. So I, I know we put the notification out, and for some reason, a lot of local kids. We had kids from, um, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, but I feel we didn't have enough on the school up there. But, um, they're all, I mean, we had a balloon personnel, we're all trying to make a balloon. She made reindeer. She made, um, swords and all that. So that was very, the DJ, so the blue lady is very, we had food for them, we had presents for them, and, um, they had their own time to run around, and the mayor was there, and so was, um, council personnel, Carrie was there also, so very successful it was, so. Thank you. And it's right in our backyard from the school, right here at the senior center. Uh, the Asian American Advisory Committee is gonna meet on the eighth of January of next month. They're getting ready for their new year, Chinese New Year, which is gonna be the seventeenth and the eighteenth of February, two days. They're gonna have the senior center and the youth center. So the whole meeting will be probably, um, Jim, you know, the, talking about parking would be the number one thing in that meeting, probably. On the advisory committee, be talking about park. That'd be the biggest thing talking about. Um. No? Well, it's gonna be about that. I mean, I, I'm not being, this, yeah, 'cause last year, the big parking problem, so you know, this year, we, we wanna make sure everything is under control, so we don't have the same problem.
I can add, I can add two cents to it. And the reason I can add two cents, Jim wasn't at the advisory meeting, but that's okay. Jim, the, the problem last year, just to tell you this, is, um, the parking over at the center. Uh, it was, so this year, they're working on a bus, which coincidentally, I had called about today for them, uh, to get some pricing. Um, I'm talking to the school to figure out if we can park cars at the school and bus people over to the youth center and senior center, so, um, they will be coming to your board meeting probably sometime in January to discuss that, once they break it down. So that's the part that I've explained.
Okay, um, this is a little thing, John, Frank, and the guys, thank you for the park. I mean, anybody drives around the village, just see all the lights are up, and you wanna see three nice trees, go ahead and park, turn your headlights off. You see three light trees down the car, and that shit says, thanks a lot, very much. Only little thing I say is, let everybody know that winter is here, ice will be on the roads, snow will be on the roads, and I go out in this on ice. I'm not afraid of it. Not a notice of, but our roads will be down to the blacktop and dry, baby. We have to dry. We're gonna dry the road. I told you about it, just to slow down, leave room between your car and the car ahead of you, and leave extra time. Um, don't think you'll be there in ten minutes with the ice, 'cause you're not gonna be there in ten minutes. That concludes my, uh, report, and, um, everyone have a happy holiday, whatever you celebrate, whether it's Juans, uh, Alaka, Christmas. Have a safe holiday, and, um, see you back in two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Trustee Logan?
Do you want to read it?
I have it, too. Um, you know what? She had sent, uh, some meeting notes, so by all means, Christine, you're more than welcome to read it.
I'm sure. You don't wanna read it.
You're all gonna read it?
It's on the line.
Well, you wanna read it?
No, I don't know. I don't know if you wanna be reading. It sounded like you wanted to read it.
No, I'll read it. I just wanna make sure Brian didn't wanna read it. Okay. Um, okay, these are trustee Logan's, uh, village board meeting notes. Uh, street lights, only four lights are, that have been reported as malfunctioning, have not yet been repaired by O and R. The rest have all been repaired, um, anything reported, that is. As far as the Z V A, nothing was on the agenda this month, so the meeting is canceled. The next meeting is scheduled for January second. Regular and alternate members are needed on both the Z V A and the planning board. Please solicit candidates for these vacancies, if you know anyone. Anyone interested in learning more about the role of Z V A and planning board members may contact trustee Logan or Mayor Carrie. Community advisory board to the state and federal prisons. Joint recruitment fair held for the F C I and O C F, that's federal and state prisons, on December thirteenth. It was the first collaborative improvement event ever held. A variety of positions opened at both facilities, including correctional officers and healthcare professionals, just to name a few, thanks to all who helped to get the word out about the recruiting event. And a reminder to please let trustee Logan know if anyone has concerns, questions, issues that they would like brought up at the correctional administrators, brought up to the correctional administrators at the next C A B meeting, which will be held in January.
I do. All right, moving on to the mayor's report. Um, believe it or not, I don't have a lot. I know that's gonna be hard to believe.
Say it every time.
Yeah, I know.
He says that every time.
I'm gonna read that. My list of what's happening. I'm watching the time. Seven twenty-five.
Twenty minutes later.
Saturday, let's see, our last meeting was December seventh, so Saturday, December ninth, uh, the Otisville Fire, um, department had their Christmas party. I wanna thank all the volunteers that obviously made the event happen, and all the volunteers that make the Otisville Fire Department what they are. So on Tuesday, December twelfth, um, I was invited along with other people I'm gonna mention here to the Mount Hope Senior two thousand twenty-three Christmas party up at the Erie Trackside of Port Jervis. I don't know the exact number, but I know it was well over a hundred people that attended. Um, Christine, uh, Kate, um, from the village, and I know, um, Kathleen and, uh, Liz from the town also attended. Um, it was a great event. Oh, my wife also attended, too. I didn't forget. Um, it was a great event, uh, first time that I actually got to go, and, uh, what a turnout that they had. So it was nice to see that many people get together, um, for a, for a Christmas party event. Uh, Saturday, December sixteenth, we had the wreaths across America, a hundred, or come here right down the road to Holy Name of Jesus Church on Allen Avenue. A hundred thirty wreaths were laid on veterans' graves. Uh, forty, I learned this as of that day, as of Saturday, forty were actually banked for next year. So the big question, uh, that I've been asked is how do you donate to the wreaths across America? Great question. You can go to wreathsacrossamerica.com. You have to look up Holy Name of Jesus Church in Otisville, New York, because there's two Holy Name of Jesus churches, and you can actually, um, uh, purchase a wreath for next year's leath. Uh, I just wanted to congratulate Danny Grogan from Grogan's Irish Bar and Grill on his eight and a half years as owner. Um, as I wrote this little joke here, he definitely quenched the thirst of plenty of people in Otisville over the last eight and a half years. Uh, I wish him luck. I wish the new loaner, uh, I haven't met the new owner yet, but I will definitely be stopping down to meet him. Um, Tuesday, December nineteenth, um, a couple days ago, we had a year-end celebration party between the village of Otisville and town of Mount Hope. I thank everyone, um, that attended. We had sixty-two people in total, so that was employees and spouses, and, um, it was a good mixture of people. Uh, I wanna thank my wife, Carrie Lee, and also Amanda Davis, Christine, Kate, and Kathleen, uh, Christine and Kate from the village, Kathleen from the town, uh, for collecting names and collecting money from people to make that event happen. So thank you to everyone that had, uh, arrived there. Facebook, I had posted, um, the D P W. department's recyclables, leaves, fire hydrant flushing, and Christmas tree pickup for two thousand twenty-four. Um, I actually did that yesterday, so it's on there as an event. So if anyone has a question of when recycling day is, or when, uh, they need to get their Christmas tree out, which their Christmas tree has to be out when? January what?
I don't have my thing with me either.
That's all right. This was a test.
Put the guy on the spot.
I'm sorry. Had to do it. I didn't bring it down.
Well, January twelfth.
January twelfth it is, so it has to be out curbside by seven A M.
They're gonna have to take their lights down.
No, that's a whole other story.
Never.
At least never. At least that's, at least they do like stuff.
Some people leave them up for next year.
I, I, I guess we'll try for that.
Um, the town of Mount Hope had a new, uh, police officer start. Uh, I just actually made it through, um, the police academy, I believe, Wednesday, yesterday. Uh, Officer Zoo, that's Z H U. I posted something on our Facebook page about it, uh, so congratulations to him. Look forward to stopping by and meeting all of us. Talked a little bit under Brian Latimer's thing about the B field backstop. Um, for those of you that haven't made it down there or haven't seen it, I realize it's getting cold. I did go down yesterday and take some pictures of it. Um, I wanna thank Catching Fence for an awesome job that they did. I wanna thank trustee Latimer for following through on the project and getting it to where it obviously is in its final state. Uh, for anyone that didn't see the before pictures, I posted before pictures and after pictures. Um, the fence was definitely an old steel fence. Uh, it was the rusted kind of fence where you used to have to put paint on it, obviously, to make it look, uh, silver or gray again. Um, and I believe after talking to, uh, to John and, well, not so much Frank, but I think he said this before, um, that possibly could have been, um, the original backstop for that field. So, um, if you haven't seen it, when it warms up, stop to have a look at it. They did an awesome job, uh, which also was in the bills, as I said. Um, January ninth, I'm almost done, by the way. That was only five minutes so far. January ninth. Um January ninth, I'm almost done, by the way. That was only five minutes so far. January ninth, uh the cares van. Um if people ask what the cares van is, I talked about this at the town board meeting. Um Congressman Pat Ryan had reached out and he's gonna be bringing the van here on. January ninth. I don't know the details of the time. I will get it uh by Christmas, I was told. And as soon as I get it, I'll post it online. But uh for those that don't know what the cares van is, it's the constituent advocacy resource empowerment service van. Um it actually will assist in anything federal, so it will assist on any social security issues, passport issues, veterans benefits issues. Uh grant funding, IRS, um and there's gonna be a list that I will post online, so that's coming uh soon enough. I will post something online about the planning board needing uh. A new member and also some alternates and I believe ZBA, I'll make sure I post something about that too. Um so if anyone is interested in that, please come down to town hall, call or village hall, I'm sorry, come down to village hall or call and we will definitely fill you in. Believe it or not, that's it.
That was a short one.
Thank you. That was uh seven minutes for the record. Um audience participation. Anyone from the audience have something to say? Come up to the podium.
Very good for Zimba Highland Avenue, for the record, there's a hundred and twenty-nine people at the uh senior center.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And it was very, we were appreciative of every, of all the village attend, village and town attendees for coming out.
Thank you.
One great thing, which is already on the table.
State your name.
Carrie Lee, Carrie Lee, Village Otisville. The town of Mount Hope will be having our swearing-in ceremony for the new and re-elected officials. For the public on New Year's Eve, September thirty-first, at three o'clock at senior center, and late refreshments will be served after. That's it.
Excellent. Anyone else? Jimmy, the last one, you wanna say something? Okay, moving on. Old business, um quarterly reviews. Let's see here, uh do you know later there, no later than February sixteenth? Um do you know what your quarterly reviews are? I'll just go through this, Malox, Bob Klaus, um and Lance Bankress. And uh Brian Latimer has cash receipts. Okay, um. Moving on down, old business. Last uh meeting, I discussed extending the hours of. Our village elections. They are currently from twelve P M to nine P M. Um so they are uh nine hours long. Um I talked in the last meeting about um extending them from what I would consider a normal election. Uh as far as like a national election from six A M to nine P M. Um I know there was some comments, I know there's some comment in the uh, but I'll just basically go with the comment that uh we have for the vote review. Let's, what's your thoughts?
I'm all for changing it to um six A M, six A M, only because um I think a lot of the voters are lost. Okay, most of them lose command at six. And just about every state, some are closed at eight, some open at seven, but not, none I found open at twelve. So I'm all for, I I believe that there are more people involved and um they're right to vote in the votes.
Bob, what do you have?
Once again, I concur with Lance.
Okay.
Um.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um are you, it's old business, but is it also new business?
Oh, we know, it is, it's on the bottom. Resolution means it's just at the bottom.
It's it's, we talked about it last meeting, that's the only reason.
I'm sorry, I. My apologies. It's it's something was added in here, it's all, it's sudden it pushed, yeah, pushed it out.
So push it to the.
I didn't say, I thought the other part was off, then the new business part.
It is off, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's my fault. It's somehow it made part of it disappear when I added that other thing. So that's my fault, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So this is gonna be a board resolution. We're gonna do a roll call. And we're gonna make this happen possibly as we scan.
Identify the hours and the location.
So the new hours would be six A M to nine P M. Uh the location would be right here, right in this meeting room, sixty-six Highland Avenue in Otisville.
So you're looking for a motion?
Thank you. Can I, I'm looking for a motion, is anyone willing to give it to me? Mayor's looking for a motion.
I made the motion that will change the voting hours in Villa Otisville from twelve P M to nine P M to six A M to nine P M. Right here in sixty-six Highland Avenue in the village hall.
There we go.
Thank you.
As right by the mayor.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Starting with Lance?
Lance?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Me? Aye.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll have a written form for you to sign off on.
Perfect. I believe that's the, when did we talk about, January?
We'll just have to be um passed by January nineteen.
Ninety days before.
January nineteenth is the the last date to pass it, but we just passed it, so.
Passed it orally, so you gotta certify it written before that date, so I'll get it to Christine and go process off.
Uh sleigh riding hill. Um discussed this last meeting also. Obviously, there's only two of you here, but I did get both your reaction, which I'll hear again in a second, but um what do we actually have to do for this? Does this have to be something that is? I guess that's the question. What exactly do we have to do for this to make this um possibly happen?
Can I talk to you offline about it? Give you like a more thorough opinion rather than the reactionary? I did not know that was gonna be on today. But I have my, I have my thoughts, but I'd rather.
Okay.
Rather than speculate, and I get them, I.
Can we?
Cuz you already have a sign up. No problem, you have to do with no sign up, you don't do much of anything. But if you're removing a sign that says no sleigh riding here, right?
Right.
I think it changes some of the dynamics of what these gentlemen have to do.
Yep.
And what you have to do as far as alerting the public to the potential dangers of doing things that everybody knows are dangerous, but.
Okay.
Guys like me in my field have created those issues.
I'll.
I mean, hold it, join in the back for me, Lance.
I'll throw it in as an executive session because um after talking to you, I would like to make a decision like tonight, if that's okay.
Then then you're gonna have to let me expound upon it in the executive session, because there's liabilities.
I'm just a, I'm just a.
Got it. Table that to the back end.
Table that. New business. Um. Last meeting, there was correspondence um. From a resident uh in reference to not having municipal water. Um I know we talked about this a little bit, um but I did want to um. Talk about this a little further. Um we did learn that four people in the village of Otisville are not hooked up to the um water system. Um but as I learned that there's actually a, I'm gonna read it off of here, there's actually a water law, um which you don't have a copy of this, do you?
That would be, I can go get.
No, 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 don't wait, don't wait to get. Can I give you this to read what the water law is that you highlighted for me?
Sure. This is um, this is section six of the um. Regular uh local law three of two thousand fifteen relating to supply and usage of municipal water in the village of Otisville. And the only reason it's from two thousand fifteen, it's actually a very old law. The two thousand fifteen date is just because there was a change to the rates at that point, but the the rest of the law. Goes probably back to the nineties when you had your water system installed. This is section six, minimum charge for available water service. A, the owner of a lot approved by a structure for occupancy of persons in a budding on a public street or road in which water main has been installed. Shall be required to pay the minimum water charge as set forth in the village's established water rate schedule. B, such minimum water charge shall apply with respect to such premises regardless of whether or not the property owner has applied for water service to the premises. C, this action shall apply to those premises as described in the section, whether or not such premises have a water supply source independent of the village water system. And whether or not such premises have ever been connected to the village water system.
Thank you. Um anyone wanna add anything about what we talked about last meeting as far as? Um I basically got a phone call. Uh I asked the resident to put it in writing, uh a letter, an email. Um and it was a question of, and and I understood it was a question of how the minimum charge has gone up over the years. Uh it's currently at eighty dollars, that is the minimum. Um that was, I believe it went as far back as forty, probably lower than forty, sixty. And then obviously it's now at eighty, and the question had come up. They are not hooked to the water, but um they're still paying the minimum charge, so. Does anyone wanna add anything to what Christine just wrote? I don't think it's something that we have to vote on, but.
It's information. You're just, right? I do, uh I did briefly mention to Christine that I'd like to. Have a discussion in the executive session about it, just because um. Obviously, I was aware it came up last meeting, but I'm, that's for some, I'm hearing that part of a discussion, so.
Okay, no problem. Bobby, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
All right, Lance?
So basically, the person feels that since they're not hooked to the water, they should not pay the minimum charge.
Correct.
Well, um most cities and towns do charge you. It's just like when cable come through, you had no choice and the village. Had to pay the cable to come through, saying it on our, they're not gonna let you go put a solar tower in your whole yard and feed your neighbors. You get the solar, and they still go back to the electric. So um to me, I, it's like every town, just so you're not hooked up to it, they still charge you. They still charge you school taxes if your kid never goes to school there. It's, and but they don't charge you bare minimum, they're not, you know, and anytime you wanna hook up to it, it's there. You, I mean, you, by living in the village, you agreed to some of the terms of the lecture. It's still hooked up to the water, but that part of being in the village and being in the town where you don't have to do um the town water. So I have no reason we're gonna leave the way it is and yes, when the rate's gone, their rate's gonna go up too, cuz they do get a benefit anytime they need it.
Just for the record, we we don't have sewer.
No, 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 right, no, no, right, we don't have sewer. I'm saying other, I also, other towns do have sewer hook up. They still, you still gotta pay whether or not you hook up to that sewer or not. And and sewer hook up, they charge you with the water come in and out, so you take eighty bottles of water out, they still charge you to go to the sewer. And eighty water went to your friend. Right. But thank you very much for clarifying.
All right, I guess we're just gonna move over here to uh, can I get a motion to accept the resignation of uh Robert Bennett as a planning board member?
I make the motion, yes, sir. The resignation of Robert Bennett as a planning board member.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christine, the next one for board resolution was that need to be uh adopted as attached.
Did you want me to read all of these?
Um no, I don't want you to read all of them, yeah, yeah, as as attached, as presented. Um can I, I'm sorry, can I get a uh um a motion? To adopt the adjusted modifications to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget?
Move we adopt the uh resolution as as written.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Aye, Bob? I'll do it, that's fine. Bob? Lance?
Aye.
Aye. Um board resolution to approve the twenty twenty-four town of Mount Hope fire protection contract in the amount of. Three hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents as presented with no change. With no changes to last year's contract other than the contract contracted price.
Move we approve the resolution.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um can I get a motion to approve the bills, general, water, fire, and capital? I'm just gonna read the amounts. Uh general, twenty-four thousand, seven dollars, twenty-one cents. Water, twenty-three thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh fire, one thousand, nine hundred, twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents, and capital, thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I make a motion that repair bills in the mouth of the mayor Ray out loud.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bob, how you voting?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
That's fine, I'm doing it, dude, that's all right.
Bill, that's just a motion.
Okay, listen, I threw it all in there. We're all in agreeance.
I have to know who wants to pay the bills.
Okay, um I'll do closing comments and then we're going to go into executive session.
With no intention of coming out to the public.
Got it. With no intention of coming out to the public. Can I, you have any closing comments?
Happy holidays to everybody.
That's fine.
Only comment I have, that the bill inspector had been busy for the month of November, I forgot to read it. Um construction inspection did three, other inspection did three, C R O she did three, and one violation. And five, we still have searches, so doing the average about um three to four. On violation and. Inspection among, so we're still having about thirty-six. So um I just forgot to read that, sorry, but um I had it. That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to go into executive session.
Also to go into executive session.
Who's to go into executive session?
Thank you, sir.
I second it.
Aye.
Without coming out.
That's good. Well, no, I mean. To clarify, he already got us locked in the room. Set that motion up properly.
Without coming out, never.
So basically, the meeting on the eighth will be about on parking.
No, I mean.
You really haven't heard, heard their rent in the facility.
Um I I forgot to add something super quick, but I wanna give a motion on. Not bad. Yeah, I have to. Okay. It's something that has to be done by first. I'm sorry. So guys, can we just come back super quick, Lance?
That works, we'll be.
Bob, we're out, we're saved. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have to go back in, we have to go back in regular session.
Can I, can I get a motion to, to come back in? I'm sorry, this is, this is a quick one.
I make the motion that we come back to the executive session to finish up some old paperwork.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, aye, perfect. This is gonna be a quick one. Um I've been looking into something called constant contacts. Um I kind of had um going back and forth as far as seeing about it, uh what constant contacts is, and one of my projects that I'd like to do in twenty twenty-four. Is I would like to communicate better with the public. And what I mean by that is, I think Facebook is great, I think our uh. Our website needs to be built upon, but that's something in twenty twenty-four too, but I would like to figure out a different way to contact people. For water main breaks, for other possible things that could happen here. Um recycling days, that being said, constant contacts um is used by other municipalities, looked a little bit into it, and this is why I wanna bring this up. Um I would like to, it's twenty-two dollars a month. And that's for zero to five hundred contacts, so that would be. I didn't bring this in with me, so Christine, that would be five thousand emails a month, I'm gonna remember what you said to me. And that would be five hundred text messages a month. Um I would like to uh do a month to month, so not a contract, but I would like to do a month to month for at least. I'm gonna say until May. Uh once May comes, I'd like to see how many contacts we have. Uh and then I would like to possibly talk about doing a contract with them. It's a little cheaper when you do a contract, but I wanna see if this would be successful. If you do five hundred and one to a thousand contacts, it's actually fifty dollars a month. So we're not talking a lot of money, and what that would allow us to do is that would allow us to get communication out to Otisville residents. Now, other residents can sign up for this, Mount Hope residents, if Jim, living in the town of Mount Hope, wants to sign up for this, he's more than welcome to. But we will have the ability to, if there's a, or God forbid, there's a water main break on Highland Avenue, we would be able to contact Otisville residents with this. So I think this would be a great tool, uh and I would like to get some approval tonight to go forward with this by January first, at least until May. So I'm gonna say five months. Uh if you wanna do the math, that's twenty-two times five. But um what's your thought? Bob, what's your thought?
You know, I'm not real familiar with it, the first, the first I've heard of it, but um I really don't have any objections. It seems the price is fairly reasonable, you know, very reasonable.
Okay.
So um like you said, I don't have any strong objections. It sounds like a reasonable thing.
Lance?
Yeah, um I don't know a lot about it, but um it seemed like the price is actually a little bit cheaper than it was for the time to sell a record, to do the same thing for every time. So Christine ran three articles in a record, it would be a lot more than the fifty, sixty dollars that um. They're charges for the whole month for that many people. I mean. I mean, she did a price on running for the record there, the two articles came on sixty dollars and probably only had, I think there's only twenty people in the village that gets the paper that runs to the guy, so. There's only twenty people there for sure in the village and paid a lot more, so. I have no problem with the mayor going ahead and trying this out, a new way of getting the resident orders on board, uh, what's going on in the village.
Okay.
So that's a yes.
Thank you, Lance, thank you. Um, I just want to add this. Um, the city of Middletown uses a program called Nixle. Anytime they have a water main break, anyone can sign up. So as a resident here, you can go into the city of Middletown, you can sign up for Nixle and they send you water mains. If they're plowing roads, if the roads blocked, I just think that this is a, we have a thousand residents, so that's very, very, very manageable. I would like to start this by people being able to sign up on Facebook or our website. And, uh, one of my projects for two thousand twenty-four is to go door to door and explain to residents exactly what we're looking for and information wise. And I want to break it down to what street they live on, uh, a cell phone number of some sort and also an email address if they're willing to give it. But I think when it's explained and why we want to do it, I think it will be a, a great tool and time will tell if I'm right about this or not. Thank you. So I guess I would like to, um, get a motion to approve, uh, I'm going to say five months. So that would bring us from what, January first to May, to the end of May, so May, what, how many months does the end of?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, thank you, thank you, should have known, thirty-one. Okay, can I get a motion to approve, um, us to spend twenty-two dollars a month, um, for five months totaling? Someone do the math on this, this should be couple.
Hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you. All right, that was a test.
I make a motion that we spend, uh, twenty dollars a month, hundred and ten dollars for five months to try this new system and generate, uh, message to the people of Otisville.
It's twenty-two bucks a month.
Twenty dollars a month.
Yeah.
For a hundred and ten.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye. I'd like to get a motion to go into executive session with no way of returning.
I make a motion to the second.
I'm sure the session.
And we'll come back later sometime in our life.
If we don't come out, you know, like. How long is like? Where's the key to your car? We'll get it home for you.
I'm going to keep asking questions like Roy is, Nancy's, what are team late? And that Roy is on my time.
The camera's still hot, Lance. Yeah, well, yeah, I think.